Comment.
At this time, the public may directly address the entire Board of Supervisors for up to two minutes on items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Board to include the minutes and the items on the adoption without reference to Committee Calendar Items 72 and 73. Public comment will not be allowed on any previous item that has already been subject to public comment, as is the case with the new items on new and unfinished business and the 3:00 p.m. special order. Pursuant to the Board's rules, please direct your remarks to the Board as a whole, not to individual supervisors and nor to the audience. Speakers using translation assistance will be allowed twice the amount of time to testify. If you would like to display a document on the overhead projector, please clearly state such to SFG TV and remove the document when the screen should return to live coverage of the meeting.
Ms. Semel, would you like to come forward and speak during public comment? Those who are sitting in the disabled and senior section are welcome to come forward before the general public. Ms. Semel, you come forward, please.
Good afternoon, Supervisors. My name is Rita Semel. I'm a Commissioner on the Human Services Commission and past Chair and co-founder of the San Francisco Interfaith Council. I speak in support of a recognition of the women named, I better take my glasses off, named Comfort Women who suffered so terribly in World War II. I speak as someone who lived throughout that war, had a husband who served in the U.S. Army, who landed on Omaha Beach in Normandy on D-Day plus three, was wounded and spent months recovering. I speak as a second-generation American who would not be alive if my grandparents had not emigrated to America in the late 19th century from a Europe determined to eliminate all Jews. What has this got to do with the Comfort Women? I recognize that we are at least three generations past that time, but as the historian George Santiano said, "He who does not know history will have to relive it." So while I hold no malice toward Germany today, I still want to remember the Holocaust. So with Japan, the Japan of today is not the Japan of 1941, but we still must remember those who suffered and died at that time. And today, we are still working through and suffering through human trafficking. It is for these reasons that I support this recognition of the Comfort Women. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Jeff Frainer, and I'm President of the Yerba Buena Island Residents Association. We are a community of 100 people, mixed-income community, that is currently in the process of being displaced from Yerba Buena Island as part of the Treasure Island Development Scheme. Our island is about to be replaced by multimillion-dollar homes, being made into a millionaire's island. We believe that this is, as city-owned land, this is illegal under the surplus land bill that was passed earlier this year, and we'd like to ask the Board of Supervisors to call a hearing to review that.
Let's review that.
Additionally, we'd like to make some requests as a community who has great concerns about the relocation process that's currently underway.
Madam President, I'm pausing your time, sir. I believe this item is associated with Item 56, the deposit and reimbursement agreement with the Treasure Island Development Authority and the community development with the naval station. Is that correct, sir?
No.
Okay.
Nothing to do with that.
Okay. My apologies.
Nope.
I will continue your time.
That's fine. So our community has serious concerns regarding the relocation process as it stands, as circumstances have materially changed since the DDA was approved by this Board several years ago. First, it was determined that we were only going to move as a community once the land was completely cleaned and handed over as a single unit to, from the Navy. That has not happened. Additionally, we are being, now we're city residents, under city tenancy laws, and we're going to be moved back into federal land and lose all those rights because we're going to be back moving what is essentially city jurisdiction back to federal jurisdiction. And then on top of that, we have the housing affordability crisis, which makes the original relocation payments really inadequate in the current time for most families. And then we also have concerns in that we do not have any rights as a community to actually return to where we live today, and that's really distressing for us as a community. We would like to have the right to return to affordable-priced housing that we currently have today and in the future when the island is redeveloped. So to summarize, please, we'd like you to see if you could provide us temporary relocation assistance that's appropriate for the current circumstances, as well as a right of return for the residents of YBI to our island when it is redeveloped. And in summary, you know, we'd like to make sure that the current development agreement is reviewed. There's been lots of changes that have happened, and there was no real comment. We were never told how they bifurcated the process, which changes quite a bit of circumstances.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, Madam President and esteemed members of the Board of Supervisors. My name is Betty Mackey, and I am an 11-year resident of Yerba Buena Island. My community's eviction and gross displacement by forced relocation to Treasure Island by the City of San Francisco to clear the way for luxury development is unconscionable. I work for a startup, and with my quite good salary, I cannot afford to move to market-rate housing in San Francisco. My job depends on me living here. This is also true for many of my neighbors, especially those with children who attend school here and whose businesses are located here. The fact that an eviction by the City of San Francisco can render us all homeless should mean something to you. I thank Supervisor Jane Kim for exploring options with the city attorney to help YBI residents in our district. We are supported by Eviction Free San Francisco and other tenants advocacy groups, and we'll be back on Thursday to voice our concerns. We invite you to join us to hear our community's distress and hopefully support us to fight this injustice. Please stop the eviction and take back the land from Lennar and Wilson Meany Sullivan for luxury development. Please keep YBI 100% affordable, and please save the YBI community from destruction by this luxury development. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Before I make my presentation, because of the fact that the President of both the Board and the United States have not reached out and handed out a condolence to the Kay Stanley family, I'd like to take time out to give out the condolences to that family. Now, I want to point out that I'm the man that pointed out to three of your overall Board members yesterday that Sheriff Mercurini kept Francisco Chavez incarcerated in the county jail for two and a half weeks after the charges were dropped and the warrant that was transported, which caused him to be placed in 850 Bryant Street. When charges are dropped, an inmate is supposed to be released before 12 o'clock midnight. So for the Sheriff Mercurini to say that he's following constitutional law and due process law pertaining to both federal and state constitutional law and the sanctuary law is an insult on everybody's intelligence. And by the same response, this federal agent who left that gun in his police car or whatever vehicle he was located in, he's part of the contributing to the death of the bright-skinned female who was murdered on Pier 14. I also want to point out that due process pertaining to U.S. citizens of the United States of America are being violated by this sanctuary law. You talk about equal protection when the truth of the matter is that the protections of citizens are being violated when undocumented and illegal aliens are getting placed in the criminal justice center and being released because of this sanctuary law. There's been a comprehensive study on the amount of arrests of misdemeanors and felons of undocumented and illegal aliens in the overall United States for an eight-month period, and has produced information that approximately about 1,025 undocumented illegal aliens are being dismissed.
Thank you very much, sir. Next speaker, please. Thank you. Sir, I'm sorry, I can't allow additional time, otherwise I'd have to do it for everyone else. Thank you very much. Next speaker. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
There's no sun here, but I have graphics. Do you know the way to Pluto? Yay, we made it. That's not Pluto, but it's another planet along the place, like Neptune or something. And, "Do you know the way to Pluto? We made. We've been away so long, we may go wrong and lose our way. Oh, space is a great big freeway. Put 100 million down and buy a space probe. And dreams of inventors of planets turn into dust and fly away. And they made it to Pluto. Hooray. You can really freeze on Pluto. And we'll find a way to get there someday. Yay. Borderline, and we're gonna lose our minds. We just keep on pushing space probes over the galaxy borderline. Please try to understand, we got a great big space plan, and we've got infinity borderline. And we're gonna relieve space shine, and we're gonna push those big space probes over the galaxy borderline. What will we find? Yah, dah, dah, dah. What will we find?" Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
I want to put this on the screen. I'm a little perturbed right now. I'm appalled right now, not just in the city government, but individuals that call themselves leaders in this arena here. And I'm not going to mention their names because I promised I wouldn't, but I'm appalled on how I was treated in someone's office here, and I'm going to make that public later. But right now, I'm here to tell this city and county, can we look at this here? We have a situation where we have the mayor, which I know for 20 years, which I know Sheriff Mercurini for 20 years, but the mayor has not spoke to the sheriff who runs this city here, I mean, in City Hall. We have these deputy summer hot dogs that put their hands on me, but I'll take care of that later, but we have a mayor and the sheriff has not communicated since we had that fisco-fasco in here in City Hall, y'all. I call it silly hall. And that's before you became Supervisor London and before you became President. But right now, I'm here to say Ace is on this damn case in the city and all these city departments' heads, they're corrupt. I would request that the federal government come here, do a thorough investigation through our City Hall, y'all, because you would find corruptness is here every day. Now, this man here, he's out of town. Who is it acting mayor here? Let me just say one thing. Yours truly, Ace Washington, has been played for six months because I came here and said I'm going to be, have retired, but the city and county has played me. So I'm going to put out the real, what's going on in my community, particularly the Western edition. Now, I'm not here to upset nobody, but London Supervisor Queen B, some change is going to have to be done immediately. Now, we cannot sugarcoat this. Uh-uh. We cannot hide. I had one of your aides told me, "Let me get out of here before I call the sheriff because you got stay-away orders." What in the hell does he know about my personal business? Should I bring out personal business that goes on in that office? No, I would not do, out of respect of you, Queen, but I'm tired of this.
Thank you, Ace. Next speaker, please.
Thank you, President Reed, and other members of the cabal. My name is Christopher Dahl, and I live at Sixth and Howard, 10 blocks and less than 14 meters from sea level, arise to comment on what it means to do a good job. That is to say, what does it take for you individually and collectively to do a good job for the good people of our beloved city and county? Recently, you authorized a 20-year information services contract with Oracle. If you had done a good job, we would all be aware that Oracle's practice is to be entirely proprietary. Oracle systems are expensive to develop and even more expensive to replace, but on average, they are no more useful than solutions from Microsoft, SAP, IBM, or any other business services organization, nor any less useful, I expect. The serious problem lies in the 20-year term. Members, for you to be doing a good job, you should be giving the same good advice to us as you give to yourselves, as you give to your families, as good as you give to your interns, as good as you give to your investors, and you didn't. Members, you cannot know that Oracle will even be in business in 20 years. You certainly cannot know what your requirements will be in 20 years, and you absolutely cannot know what technology will be available in 20 years. You would never advise your children to buy more than a two-year contract for wireless service or pay more than $200 for the hardware. Who knows what marvels of cheapness and technology will be around in two years, much less 20? Members, there's a better deal out there. Please go find it. Thank you, President Reed.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Koichmera. I live in Los Angeles. I had the pleasure of listening more than three hours of debate in this chamber about jails and housing and so forth. That is a proper task of this chamber. Now, I'm talking about comfort women issue. This is international issue. That is an issue which is between Korea and Japan, and also U.S., Korea, and Japan. And this issue should be dealt by federal government in the case of U.S. So city government should not be intervened in this issue. That's one point. Second, this issue is really dividing people. U.S. is a country of, say, a country having immigrants from various places. They should be living together in harmony. This comfort women issue will divide people, and that is not really good. In addition, one point I'd like to make is that the usual comfort women's story is a fabricated story. In fact, those women were not sex slaves. They were paid well. They had very good life, and they had lots of income. So they...
Excuse me, can I remind members of the, excuse me, sir, we are pausing your time. Can I remind members of the public that applause or any vocal expression is prohibited in the chamber? You can wave your fingers and keep silent while members of the public have their opportunity to speak, and any member of the public is welcome to speak. Continue.
Now, there are at least two U.S. governments which proves that comfort women were usual people, not sex slaves. One is written 1944 during the war. In Burma, you know, say, 20 Korean comfort women were interviewed, and that says, okay, those are...
Thank you, sir. Your time is up. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Toshiro Honju. I have something to say about Memorial Statue of Comfort Women. I'm against the installation of a memorial statue because if memorial statue is built in San Francisco, one of the most famous sightseeing area in the United States, it causes a negative image not only to Japanese people but also to whole world. Besides, we should not divide our community by accusing one group, Japanese community, out of many ethnic groups. The United States is a country of immigrants. The country should strive to keep harmony and peace among ethnic groups. The installation of a memorial of comfort women is an act of hate expression which should not be done. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Maliko Kada Collins. I'm talking about the Comfort Women statue. San Francisco has a troubled history with racism and ethnic hatred. As much of the city is proud of its recent history with inclusiveness and resistance to the hatred and racism. It still has still not erased its dark past with regarding ethnic Japanese racism. This statue represents a return to the dark days when the San Francisco mayor using Schmitz as neo-fascist, sons of the Golden West Organization were active in many anti-Japanese activities supported by the so-called fact. And MHD Young's San Francisco Chronicle published headline like "Brown Men Evil in the Public Schools," "Japanese Menace American Women," etc. Then the school board, supported by the mayor and the city council, joined with racist American Souths and segregated San Francisco school for Japanese students, saying the same illogical statement that it was not about harming Japanese-American relationship, but responding to the fact and history. Nothing much seemed to be changed in San Francisco other than that white racists have opportunity to ally with Uncle Tom like Asian color later in modern-day racist campaigns to assume that Japanese are sex-crazed rapists. It appeared to be like current supervisor is to set to continue the tradition in the 21st century. The city council set to vote in a statute that promotes ethnic and racial hatred, promotes an exaggerated crime against the Japanese, while overlooking equal violation by American Koreans and Russians as seen in the Grand Hill and Union City, does absolutely nothing to raise awareness to save one woman from the human trafficking. So I don't think you don't want this to be voted, yes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name is Terumi Imamura. I'm also here to oppose the comfort woman statue to be built here. I have several concerns and asking myself, why? Why is it in San Francisco? Why is in America? Why targeting Japanese? My biggest concern is that Japanese and Japanese-Americans who live in here in America are will be targeted because our nationality? And again, many of us remember those painful camp days during wartime. Is that going to happen again? We are scared. We are concerned. We are worried. Besides that, these crimes that they have on comfort women, 200,000 women and children are forcibly abducted, tortured, sex-slaved. There is no solid evidence to it. And here I have the report number 49, report titled "Japanese Prisoner of War Interrogation of Prostitution," reported by United States Office of War Information Psychological War Time Warfare Team, which reported on 1944. Also, the newer one is "Nazi War Crimes and Japanese Imperial Government Record," final report to the United States Congress in April 2007. Neither of them indicate those possible...
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Thank you.
Hello, Supervisors. My name is Yoshi Taguchi of Happy Science. And do you know IWG document entitled "The Nazi War Claims and Japanese Imperial Government Records"? It is originally signed by President Clinton on October 8, 1998, to investigate the crimes of Nazi. Then on May 23, 2000, Dr. Michael Carrance announced it that the IWG will take step forward to declassification of records related to Japanese war crimes. It has over 8 million pages and spent $30 million. This is one. And you can see the detail through this site in the internet. And finally, the April 2007, they submitted the final report to the United States, and that is kind of the summary of their investigation. This is a document, and it has 125 pages. And the Chairman of this committee, Stephen Garfinkel, concluded his opinion in the preface. Among the disappointed will be those who had hoped for the volunious releases of the U.S. records related to the Japanese war crimes. Many people around the world had hoped that the IWG world unearthed records that would help them document Japanese atrocities. The IWG uncovered and released few Asian serial records.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please.
Hello, I'm Sally Johnson. And in 2006, I asked the police department to come and give me, for court hearings or any planning department, but nothing was ever done. And I was wondering why, you know, because if a new resolution goes through that, that these are requirements, because it's like being together and not going apart. And I don't, you know, understand why that happened because, you know, there's like following with coordinates and being, working together and being in more rehabilitation states that a lot of people don't understand what's being, building things and, you know, which is always going to demolish in a way. And I agree with building and putting all my own money out for all these projects, but I think that these buildings ain't going to stand for the longest time for, you know, our people are to be followed and be in different medical procedures. And health issues, which I'm trying to go to school, trying to enroll in, or health issues, place me out of issues, and other, you know, mathematics and other problems that, you know, might be required at school until they can understand. Because when I did it last time, they changed the paperwork on me to where I had to pay for it all, and I didn't have the money, you know, it was all broken. And then I signed, and that was kind of, you know, revenge against women for even to be in that kind of situation. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
My name is Jean B. Chan of the Red and Nanking Coalition, co-founder in 1997 by the late Dr. Clifford Ueda, a Japanese-American humanitarian and a group of diverse individuals of Chinese, Korean, Jewish, and Japanese descent. Our board members included Fred Koremasu, Gordon Hayabaiyashi, and Ron Tatakisaks. We miss them very much. They have passed on, but their legacy of justice and fairness will live forever. I will speak from a very personal perspective. I lived through the Japanese invasion. I ran away from the Japanese invasion. I was in a Chinese village. We were civilians, but the Japanese soldier came every night to threaten us. We have to run away in the middle of the night. And I had a little brother. My little brother got sick, and he didn't have enough food. He didn't have enough medicine. He died. And as a result, my parents have... And as a result, my parents have no sons, later on they have five more girls, but they lost their only son in the hands of the Japanese invaders. When I was eight, one day, we had to run away from the Japanese again. And we usually go to the mountain, but it had rained the night before, the bridge had been washed out, so we couldn't go to the mountain. So we just hid behind the bushes and in the river. And I remember I turned blue, and I saw Japanese pointing the bayonets at me behind the thick bushes. Luckily, they didn't find me, so I survived. But the Comfort Women and sex-slaves didn't survive. Many of them died serving the so-called giving comfort to the Japanese soldiers. And the 35 million Chinese and Asian did not survive like I did. So let's put politics aside. Let's-
Thank you, thank you very much. Thank you very much. Next speaker.
Good evening supervisors, my name is Mary Lee Mondahar. I'm with the Filipino Women's Network. I am here to support the Comfort Women Memorial. I first learned that Comfort Women is a name assigned to sexual slaves as an institution created by the Japanese military during World War II from my mother. She would tell us stories about how she would hide, or her sisters would hide, when Japanese soldiers would go house to house looking for women and girls. A thousand Filipino women, Comfort Women have been documented. I became more intimately familiar with the Filipino Comfort Women when I met Eve Ensler, the author and the playwright of The Vagina Monologues, who wrote a special monologue about the Comfort Women when she met the Filipino Comfort Women when she was in the Philippines. So every year, our organization put on the shows to raise awareness about the stories about these women. We raise money for them. We send them money because they're now in their 80s and 90s. Every Wednesday, they are at the Japanese Embassy in the Philippines, waiting for the apology, rain or shine, they're there. I am here to speak for them. The majority of them are old, all 200,000 of them. Chinese, Filipinos, Koreans, Australians, Indonesians, Malaysians, Taiwanese, Burmese, and women of the Netherlands. Their stories cannot die. We have to keep reminding our next generation about what they have done. It is important that San Francisco build a memorial in memory of the girls and women who suffered as sex slaves. We need a place of remembrance, we need a place of reflection, especially so that the atrocity does not happen again. So let us join eight other cities in the US that have built memorials to remember the Comfort Women. I ask you to support this resolution. Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Hiran Yang of the Korean Association. I urge you to support the resolution to remember the Comfort Women. During the Second World War, Korean women, young women, were kidnapped and forced as sex slaves to Japanese soldiers. As a child, I read about their lives, terrible, terrible, horrible, sad stories, and I felt so sad and helpless because I could not do anything to help them. I was not even born when these tragic things happened. But now, I have a choice to help them to be remembered, and I want to do my part to remember them. And I hope the San Franciscans can remember them also. Please, please build a monument in San Francisco so that not only I, but also my children can go and pray for them and for world peace. I wish no ill will to anyone, but we need a place to present some flowers to those women who suffered so much. If they were alive, they would be our grandmother's age. I'd like to quote the Winston Churchill, who said, "Those who failed to learn from history are doomed to repeat it." Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker.
My name is Jim Smith. I worked in Japan for over 20 years. I assure the member, I support the resolution, but it doesn't go far enough. He who is without sin should not cast the first stone. What about our memorial glorifying US imperialism in the Philippines? Know where it is? Union Square, 100 feet high. 200,000 Filipinos were killed by US imperialism. Let's get rid of the Dewey Monument and build a monument to all victims of war crimes, not only by Japanese, but by our own troops and our own military system. Thank you.
Thank you, next speaker.
Good President, and thank you supervisor. I wasn't planning to speak, but I just saw this resolutions, like what in the world in San Francisco? I'm sorry, I'm referring to Comfort Women Memorial of what in the world? I am MFD intern, this setting up some statue or whatever, it happened in some city, and that totally psychologically reinforcing something negative. Not, okay, something happened in the past, let's not forget about the history, but I think we need to move on. I mean, yes, it happened, and in San Francisco and eight other cities, maybe somewhere in other parts in the world, it happened. But kids, who has to hear this? Like I myself hear some, okay, people in elder age, people experience it, but I would prefer something in the city council members speaking, something win-win, not to, here's a, you know, memorial, so just like a gentleman said, maybe we need other memorial, or more memorials for all the human sacrifice. Human trafficking is totally happening in, you know, current stage, not like other Comfort Women things, but, so we need to focus on what, I think that for the human sake, what's more important than spending land and money to build for the memorial? Thanks so much.
Next speaker.
Good afternoon supervisors, my name is Jennifer Chang. I'm a member of San Francisco Bay Area Coalition to commemorate the Pacific War. I'm here to support the resolution to erect the Comfort Women Memorial Site in San Francisco. I've heard a story from 87-year-old Vietnamese woman. She told me with her own eyes, she saw her neighbor's daughter's breast got cut off by Japanese soldier when the Japanese invaded her village. Unbelievable, isn't it? But that is the truth, not fabricated. We are the young generation, we should know the right, we should have the right to know the truth of the history. We should know that at least 200,000 young women and young girls in China, Korea, Vietnam, Philippine, and countries occupied by Japanese in World War II were kidnapped and forced to be sex-slave to the Japanese army. This young woman's painful experience was first largest scale of human trafficking in the world in the last century. They were forced, they had no choice. They suffer from torture, rape, and humiliation every day. They cry, they scream, but no one can help them. Some of them die from it, some of them commit suicide because they could not handle it. Yet, some of them survived, but they have to carry this for the rest of their life. Don't they deserve respect and sympathy? San Francisco is one of the most diverse city. I'm proud to tell people that I'm San Franciscan. Eracting this memorial site will be significant to the proud San Francisco community we call home. This memorial will serve as a good lesson to our future generation to learn that we all have our equal rights to live. No one has the right to commit atrocity against others and then tell the victim community, let's just forget it and go on. If we forget, we should go to the other end.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, my name is Michael Wong. I'm from Veterans for Peace San Francisco. I'm also a native San Franciscan, born and raised. The Comfort Women history is well-established by Korean, Chinese, Japanese sources, as well as European and Filipino and other independent sources. There's no doubt that over 200,000 women were forced into sexual slavery by the Japanese military and contractors. Confronting the truth and openly discussing the past is the best way to avoid repeating that past and to together building a better future for all people. This statue honors the suffering of innocents and is one step towards closure and moving on to a better mutual future for all people. One of the reasons that I am here is because the Japanese peace movement reached out to Veterans for Peace and asked us to support them in speaking out against the militarization of Japan, the denial of World War II war crimes, the denial of the Comfort Women issue. So, and POs in Japan show that the peace movement actually has majority support, even though the right wing in Japan has the big money. So this is not about Japan bashing, and it is not about bashing Japanese. This is about working with our counterparts in Japan who are working for peace for all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker.
My name is Martha Hubert. I'm a resident of San Francisco District 8. And I'm here because I support the installation of a statue commemorating these women that have suffered so much. This issue's been pushed under the carpet for a long, long time, and we need to realize that history's going to repeat itself unless we pay attention to what's happened. We haven't even passed the ERA, the Equal Rights Amendment. It seems horrible what's happening in terms of women and their lives and the future for young women. So I advise you to go along with making this statue come into being, and I'll be there to help commemorate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Thank you. My name is Gwyn Kirk. I'm involved in Women's International League for Peace and Freedom and a group called Women for Genuine Security. Like many others, I'm here to support the installation of a memorial for Comfort Women here in San Francisco. I think this city has a lot to be proud of in terms of its big vision and the way that it's possible to blend international and local issues. This is a very diverse city, as many people have said. The only way we're going to face the past is by the truth, and as other speakers have said, this brushing under the rug doesn't serve anyone. I think that open discussion of something, however difficult, is, you know, beholden upon us so that this is not repeated. Recently, I was in Korea, both North Korea and South Korea, and it's a fact that so many people there are still concerned about the Comfort Women issue, still working hard about it. But as other speakers have said, it goes way beyond Korea. So many women from many other countries were deployed by the Imperial Army, not Japanese people, but by the Japanese Imperial Army at that time. So congratulations to the people who have brought this motion before the Board of Supervisors, and I would very much like to see it passed. Thank you.
Thank you, next speaker.
My name is Adrian Fong, and I'm a resident and a native of San Francisco. And I know that this issue of Comfort Women is a controversial issue, but bearing it from our history books and from what San Francisco represents, a history of peace is not the solution. I hope the Board of Supervisors will consider doing this so that we can move on and history doesn't repeat itself. Thank you.
Thank you, next speaker.
My name is Judith Sandoval. I'm also a native San Franciscan. I'm a supporter of Veterans for Peace, and I simply ask you, please, establish the statue. San Francisco deserves it, and so do they.
Thank you very much. Next speaker.
My name is Tomo Kimikawa. I'm a member of Classics activist group Eclipse Rising, and I'm here to support the memorial statue of Comfort Women. And I am a descendant of both Korean and Japanese ancestors. And growing up in Japan, I have seen a number of courageous survivors of the system spoke, came out and spoke. And also, I saw that many Japanese women, including my mother, tried to learn from the testimonies and supported those women. And so I'd like to emphasize that this issue is confronting the past, this past crime is a very important place where we could create collaborative future and think about where we'd like to go from here to build, I mean, for our future. And so, and also I'd like to express my concern over the way that some of the Japanese right-wing groups mishandling the historical evidence, contradictory with many leading historians, both in Korea, Japan, China, in many other parts of Asia, and also US and Europe, and-
You have 29 seconds left.
Oh, okay, so contradict with the consensus by historians without much, without the examination of historical evidence and interpretation based on the larger contextual knowledge. And so, thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker.
Hi, my name is Hisako Blair, and I'm 87 years old. And I come over here for, and, statue of Comfort Women in San Francisco. I'm sorry, my poor English. I live in the United States ever since 1952, and was still, my English is very poor, sorry, try. And, okay, during World War II, I was a high school student, and we all is hungry, we all used to starve. Am I uniform, are people uniform? We all put the bed up, but we always keep smile all the time. We have no food and hungry and all the time. And anyhow, and, it's, I just called and sing a song. Buttan, buttan, yatte iru, yuzen arai no oyakata wa, shira kawa chosengin. It's been, it's Korean people, we call that time choseng. Korean people sing song, who care and hard working? It's money, 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 money. We got the money, we got the food, we don't have, you don't have, but we have money. Okay, but we are, we just keep smiling. And like Kyoto Station, it's my hometown is Kyoto. The Kyoto Station, it's Japanese soldier and go round to the train. That time, whole bunch group of the Korean people, young or old women, they come round, they put the makeup in the face, and they have no pants, and they just pull up in their clothes, and short, and their bottom-
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Thank you. Next speaker.
My name is Haruko Yoshida. I came to San Francisco 1972, and I became citizen of United States. And I just wanted to say that I am very against having the statue here in San Francisco, and which might create hate issue between Korea and Japan. And this is really political issue that you supervisors need to study history background, where it's coming from, and then evaluate it. And it's for the future, for the kids, for everybody else in the city, and I think it's nothing to do- And I think it's nothing to do with San Francisco and also between Japan and Korea issue. It's a separate. And why do we have to bring this issue? You know, this happened a long time ago. And I think you should really evaluate well in order to decide. And this is what I wanted to say today. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello, my name is Marielle Wong. I wanted to talk about the issue, about the comfort woman statue. So I've been hearing a lot of the testimonies, and people are saying that we should remember history and we should make sure to honor those people and to not brush away those, you know, historical issues under the rug. But the main concern for me is that there's this report called the, it's called the IWG Report. It was reported, it was said earlier by another person. And this was a U.S. government inter-agency group that did research about the comfort woman issue. It's the total research, research, the U.S. government FBI, CIA agents, historical specialists used thirty million dollars to conduct research on about eight million pages of material regarding the information gathered regarding Japanese war crimes. And after analyzing those documents, these are specialized people that, they're intelligent, they're educated, and they've been doing a lot of research for, say, seven, eight years regarding this topic. But in the report, it specifically states that no large corpus of documentation remain classified on the comfort woman issue was not there. And I'm left to think, well, if the U.S. government wasn't able to find any information about the comfort woman issue, then shouldn't we reconsider putting up this statue? Like, there's so much research done, but--
Thank you very much. Next speaker.
Honorable member of the board, my name is Philip Choi. I live in Sunset District. I'm here to voice my support for the resolution to build a statue to commemorate and for the comfort women's issue. I've been a news reporter in Hong Kong for many years, and I see a lot of footage in my library, in my TV stations, of all kinds of atrocity during the Second World War. I think today we're discussing the issue is not about Japan against Korea or China against Japan. It's about, as a human being, should we respect those women who's been forced to be a sex slave in the Second World War? Well, we hear so many arguments today, but I think the fact is very simple and true, that is, a lot of women suffering during the Second World War. And now, as a local communities, we have over two-hundred organizations petitioning, using their own money to build a statue just in our own community, just to provide some justice to these thousands of women's being raped, being forced as a sex slave. And hopefully, in this seventy anniversary of the Second World War, we can provide the world some truth about this issue, even though up till now, we haven't heard any acknowledgement and, you know, about the comfort women's from the official Japanese channel. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. Next speaker.
SFG TV, please.
Madam President and Supervisors, my name is Ignatius Sting. I'm the Executive Vice President for the Global Alliance for Preserving the History of World War II in Asia. I'm here today for two reasons. One is deliver this letter from Congressman Mike Honda, urge you to support this resolution. Mr. Honda was an intern during World War II because of his ethnicity, and later he becomes a leading force advocating the apology and reparation to Japanese-Americans. He had been fighting for human rights throughout his career, from supervisor to the assemblyman in California, then in congressman. And so I want to present it to you and also a copy of this letter to all of you are in your inbox just right today. Second, I also want to comment because a number of people mentioned the IWG. In fact, I was the one draft the resolution on behalf Senator Dianne Feinstein and Orrin Hatch to support the IWG. I know many of the commissioner. These people speaking of that research, they should have their fact-checked. Those are a bunch of lies. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker.
President and Board of Supervisors, my name is Yuri Sands. I'm a social worker. This is United States. Why bring up the long-time ago's history? If you do that, you have to make all kinds of statues front of the city or San Francisco. This is U.S., America, and I am American citizen. Fifty years ago, I took, I'm speaking. We have to hold a hand with the whole nation, Russian, American, Chinese, Korea, everybody. We should hold a hand, not against. You don't need those comfort woman statues. I don't agree. We have to hold a hand to show children future care as a people too. We are the Americans. You don't want to build so many statues? You dig out all the histories? We are the Americans. You live in San Francisco. This is not Korea's country. This is an issue different. This is the U.S. We are living America. So don't fight. Peace. Everyone hold a hand. I do not agree for this statue. Thanks.
Thank you. I just remind members of the audience, if you want to express approval or disapproval, you can use silent hands, either jazz fingers or thumbs up or thumbs down. Next speaker.
Lo De Shi Fong. I live in St. Francis Square, the Longshoreman's Co-op. I hope some of you will be at Leroy King's service on Saturday. Upstairs, I have a Korean family. She's married to an American GI who's in Kaiser right now. We wouldn't have Kaiser if it wasn't for World War II. There isn't a difference between local or international. This is San Francisco. People came for gold from all over the world. World War II was run out of all our bases here, from Hunters Point to Alameda, Concord, Mare Island, you name it. So these issues are real, they're historical, and I feel the same way. I'm a social worker without portfolio, but these things need to be resolved. Japan and Germany were late to the great game. Germany and Europe have dealt with these historic issues. The diplomat who chose San Francisco for the United Nations after all the suffering in both Europe and in Asia. Okay, we had a big shindig in the sixtieth because Walter Schorenstein funded it. The seventieth, the Secretary General was here, Mayor Ed Lee, and Charlotte Mayor Swig Schultz officiated as Chief of Protocol. Now Charlotte and George have their names on the carriageway across Van Ness. I think we need to do some historical reconciliation, discussion about how to deal with these issues because our children in preschool, K to twelve, community college, and higher ed, we have to deal with the issues. We don't want war. The money that is spent is here in San Francisco. You need finance capital to fund military aggression instead of diplomacy and education and senior housing. So let's--
Thank you very much. Next speaker.
Bonjour, bonjour, Ohio, Jasan, Kitiko, Shalom, Cheerios, Guttermachen, Aduba Uto, Salam, Good Morning America, Grits, Grets. I say that in many languages because that's how we say good morning in America to so many people who have made this country great. As we look at here, justice and pride and love, we do care at City Hall about this. I want you to know this lady here, her name is Bishop Flunder. She is a spiritual warrior who we know used to live in the city of San Francisco, but now she's in Oakland, and we miss her. And one thing about this lady, we had safety when she was here, Bishop Flunder. She says that Filthy Hero of the Year is proclaimed a misfit who sees divine in a multitude of ways. Mainstream culture may try to separate and divide us, but goodness, love will win the way. And also, go to hip hop for change dot, hip hop for change dot org. But we're here today to talk about, I look at all the things that's going in America now, it's about housing, police killings, people shooting up churches. You know, we don't know who's in our country, but we will take advantage of citizens and non-citizens. If we have housing, there won't be no guns, there won't be no killings. We'll know where you at, and it is time that San Francisco step up and know that everybody should have a place where you can be found. It is, don't let the five percent play on people who are coming here to live and people who are already here living. People should live in this country like it's supposed to be. We are melting pot, and all our problems are caused--
Thank you very much. Next speaker.
Tom Gilberti wore guns, bullets, bombs, bayonets, drones, wars, inhuman moments of regret, many. Switching time, nineteen sixty-five, fifteen years old, romantic adventure, going to Cuba and cutting sugar cane. Bravo Obama. Nineteen sixty-five, gym races, I was the fastest one off the line, but I finished the race looking at the leaders past the line. I may never be a gifted speaker, and still I'm going to ask for a bonus minute. Say if you come here to this podium two times in a row, the third time you come, you get the third minute, and you can roll that out as long as you keep coming. Maybe the clerk of the board could set that up. Thinking outside of the box. And before I get going into housing, I'm going to take a little moment to go Laguna and Marina Boulevards, Safeway, Fort Mason, terrible corner, bicycle runners, cars, walkers, wheelchairs, adding a ferry, a million people, cars, quality of life, I don't think so. It diminishes. Same corner, twenty-eight bus. This past weekend, waiting for a half-hour bus for the twenty-eight line, seeing five Uber taxis pull up and pull away, taking about fifteen people away, about thirty people later board the bus. This is the future. You don't have to look too far away to see Google driverless buses and driverless taxis on the street. We can work this thing together again. And I can't get to housing, could I? Run out of time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there any other member of the public who would like to make public comment? Seeing no additional public comments, public comment is closed. Before we proceed to the next item, could I have a motion to excuse President Breed and Supervisor Christensen? Motion by Supervisor Farrell, seconded by Supervisor Marr. And colleagues, can we take that without objection? Without objection, that'll be the order. Madam Clerk, can you please read the adoption without committee reference calendar?
Item seventy-two and seventy-three are being considered for adoption without committee reference. A unanimous single call vote may adopt these items on first reading. If a member objects, an item may be removed and considered separately.
Okay, colleagues, would anyone like to remove an item?
Item seventy-two.
Okay, so we'll just take the two separately. Madam Clerk, will you please call item number seventy-two?
Item seventy-two is a resolution to urge the city to establish a memorial for comfort women.
Supervisor Marr.
Thank you. I'd like to move to refer to committee, and thank you so much to all the speakers and all the cosponsors of this item.
Okay, that is the prerogative of any member, so this item is sent to committee. Item number seventy-three.
Item seventy-three is a motion to authorize preparation of written proponent and opponent ballot arguments and rebuttal ballot arguments for submittal to the voters at the November third, 2015 Consolidated General Election.
Colleagues, my understanding is this is not quite ready yet because names for some of the ballot measures or titles are still being worked out. So could I have a motion to continue item seventy-three one week? Motion by Supervisor Tang and seconded by Supervisor Yi. Colleagues, can we take that without objection? Without objection, that will be the order.
To July twenty-eighth, Mr. Chair.
To July twenty-eighth, yes. Okay, Madam Clerk, can you please read the in memoriam?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Today's meeting will be adjourned in memory of the following individual, on behalf of Supervisor Christensen for the late Father Austin Cantano.
Okay, and Madam Clerk, is there any other business before the Board of Supervisors?
That concludes our business for today.
Okay, then we are adjourned.